Good evening and welcome to the Merrimack School Board Budget Hearing tonight, January 5th, 2017. If you please join me in rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. And we are on to item number three, which is public participation. If you wish to speak under public participation, please come to the microphone, state your name and address for the record. Seeing none, we will close public participation and go on to item number four, which are the first of a few budget presentations tonight. So I will welcome to the table the elementary schools, James Master Cola Elementary School, Reed's Ferry Elementary School, and Thornton's Ferry Elementary School. The principals, Emily Carter, Kim Yarlot, and Bridie Bellamare accordingly, and their assistant principals, Michelle Romaine, Nick Coler, and Julie DeLuca, respectively. Welcome all, and Kim, I understand you will be the spokesperson because you are the healthiest of all of them. Yes, I've got some right here, too. So, welcome. And congratulations on being the healthiest of all of them.
Thank you. So hello, everyone. I am Kimberly Yarlot, principal of Reed's Ferry School, and as mentioned, I have with me here Assistant Principal Nick Coler from Reed's Ferry School, Principal Bridie Bellamare from Thornton's Ferry School, Julie DeLuca, Assistant Principal Thornton's Ferry School, Principal Emily Carter from Master Cola Elementary School, Assistant Principal Michelle Romaine, Master Cola Elementary School, and we just want to say Happy New Year to everybody and thank you for having us here. And on behalf of my colleagues, I'll be providing an overview of the 2017-2018 proposed elementary school budgets. And as in with past years, the 2017-2018 budget proposals for the three schools continues to reflect the priorities of the logic model and by maintaining progress in the areas of literacy, numeracy, technology, and school climate. And they also reflect the need to be fiscally responsible and strive for minimal budgetary implications. The three elementary school administrators work closely with one another to establish collective priorities. Common to all of our budgets is the reinstatement of those items that were removed from last year's budget, specifically the furniture replacement, student desks and chairs, as well as other small school-specific items such as bookcases and tables. The furniture replacement account reflects the priority of replacing first the student desks and chairs, which has been ongoing, and we anticipate this being completed 2020 with the projection that we've put forward. The vision for the ongoing plan will include eventual replacement of other worn-out furniture such as bookcases and tables and coat closets. Also common to the three elementary schools, school's budget is the increase to the math text in order to support the implementation of a math program K through 4. And I want to thank you for closely examining our budgets and providing us with clarifying questions in advance. I'll read through your questions, provide answers, and address any clarifications after going through all the questions, if that works for you. And Chairperson Barnes, do you need me to give the text account numbers, or are you all set?
Should be all set if you just put out the question and then if...
Okay.
And the subject area it covers, yeah.
So I'm going to begin with a question from Chairperson Barnes relative to the field trip account, and the question is as follows: How did a cost go down on field trips at MES and Thornton's Ferry School considering transportation costs are increasing by 3.5%? Generally, field trip costs may fluctuate based on three factors. One would be the increased transportation cost, another would be grade level sizes, and the other would be the mileage to and from selected field trips. For example, a proposed change in the field trip for Grade 1 for 2017-18 is a change from the Brookdale Apple Orchard to the students actually doing a tour of the town of Merrimack, primary offices, police station, town hall, et cetera. So that will result in a minimal mileage cost for MES, given their central location to the town offices. Additionally, a specific grade level may require two buses one year and three buses the following year based on grade level enrollment. The next question from Chairperson Barnes is regarding the furniture replacement plan, and the question is as follows: Please share how your furniture replacement plan is being budgeted in response to managing from a default budget this year. I see Reed's Ferry School and Master Cola Elementary School covered last year's costs plus a couple thousand dollars each for additional furniture. Thornton's Ferry School does not have such a breakout. Would there have been no furniture replacement in this year's budget had the cut not been made to meet the default? And in fact, all three of the schools put the furniture cost back into this proposed budget from the cut, from the default. The increase in the bottom line reflects the increase in the costs from the supplier. So Thornton's Ferry School went from $7,300 to $9,900 with the increase being the per item cost. Thus, all three schools are requesting the same reinstatement of furniture replacement. And thirdly, from Chairperson Barnes, she asked for clarification on the science text account relative to the purchase of an online subscription. And it says, please tell us a bit about this content and will RFS and MES be instituting it in the future? This is reference to the Science A to Z online resource which both RFS and MES currently use. Thornton's Ferry School has added this resource to their budget for the coming school year. This online site is categorized into three strands that align with our curriculum, Earth, Space, Physical, and Life Science units. Within each strand, there are various components. There are science books that are levelized to individual readers that can be printed off and used in the classroom. There are teacher manuals for interactive lessons and investigations, and video clips that come with worksheets related to each strand. I'll now move to a question offered up by Board Member Schneider, and it's relative to the math textbooks across all three schools. And the question is as follows: The increase for Thornton's Ferry School and Reed's Ferry School for math texts was much higher than that of MES. Given the update to the math curriculum, I'd expect these to be similar across all three schools. Can you explain the smaller total for Master Cola Elementary School and also talk about whether these are placeholder texts based on the yet-to-be-finalized curriculum? And the cost to each school is, this is the answer, the cost to each school is proportional to the population of each building. Thus, the range in proposed budgetary increases at each school. And in regard to the placeholder question, while we have an intention of adopting a new math program for the 2017-2018 school year, K through 8, we don't want to be hasty in the selection process. Thus, should a new program not be implemented, the math text accounts will support our current program, and the extra funds would then have been, that would have been allocated for the new program will go back to the taxpayers. Oops, excuse me. As with Chairperson Barnes, Board Member Schneider has asked a question about the furniture account, furniture replacement across all three schools. And the question is, I know we removed the furniture replacement in 2016-2017 budget. However, can each school talk about impacts should the desk chair replacements be done more gradually, such as 25 desks and chairs rather than 50 per school as currently planned? And do we have chairs and desks that are past a repairable state? The answer is, we're close to finishing the replacement of the desks and chairs at each of the three buildings. There are a range of approximately four to six classrooms at each building that require new desks and chairs. If two classrooms are done each year, we would complete this furniture replacement by In response to the question about limiting the bottom line furniture replacement requests, we could certainly go back to the table and discuss what makes sense to cut. And in response to the desks and chairs being repaired versus replaced, it's not possible, given the current poor condition of the desks and chairs and their age in terms of repairs. The last question from, put forth from the board comes from Board Member Thompson, and it's relevant to the overall supply account. I was wondering if you could provide more detail on how the numbers per pupil are arrived at for items like art supplies, English language art supplies, phys ed supplies. I see they're the same for each school. And this question actually begs a bit of a historical perspective. At a point in time a number of years ago, a common amount of money for each supply account was determined to provide budgeting help for this line. That amount divided by the number of students at that point in time formed this basis for the original per pupil cost. Over time, when the costs for supplies has increased, the per pupil amount has been adjusted accordingly. So once again, I want to thank you for putting the questions forward ahead of time, and I hope that we have offered up clarifications, but we are certainly open to any questions that you have for further clarification at this time.
Thank you. Are there any additional questions or clarifications from the board on the elementary school budgets? Andy and Michael, so far.
My question is actually more towards Andy in regards to your question on the chairs. Were you thinking instead of actually just, basically what you're saying is going from 50 to 25 is actually cutting out a year? And were you thinking of possibly going to like 37 per year for the next couple of years and then go back on track? Is that more of your thought process, or were you thinking of just...
So, as we go through every year looking at these, things like furniture is always the first thing that gets waxed. It's like the low-hanging fruit. And my question was more along the lines, and it wasn't just your school, every school I've sort of asked this question, is what if we slowed the furniture update across a longer period rather than shorter? Therefore, I just threw a number out of the hat, cut it in half. Maybe it could be in thirds, I mean, or two-thirds, one-third. I didn't, it was more along the lines of, do you have two classrooms worth of desks that the kids are like teetering every day and you have to replace them? Or is this just a planned, you know, obsolescence that if I made it seven years instead of five, could that still work? That was more my question, because if we have, if we have to cut, I'd much rather have something more smooth going across rather than extending it further out and cutting it every year versus something maybe more gradual. That was the intent behind the question. So that's obviously not a question for them, it's a question for my intent.
Did you have a clarifier on that question?
I mean, I was just going to say that I've, through my years on the Budget Committee, I've been, and of course, as a parent as well, and I think Kim is taking me on tours more than I can count, it feels like, but, I mean, there's so many of those chairs that are repaired over and over and over and over again, and it always makes me a little nervous to keep kicking the can when some of those chairs are probably, I don't know, what, 25, 30, 35? Yeah, exactly. So it's almost one of those things that I almost feel like, once there's a plan, we should try to stay on track unless we have to cut it. But, I mean, that's just based on my observation and from, you know, having been at the school.
I have also been through all these can-kicking exercises, and the idea was, because we tend to keep kicking the can, whether, you know, when we get pinned against the wall, we're much more likely to hit something like this than a, than a program or an education thing. So my idea was, do we do something that is more gradual so we're less likely to pull it than we are today? That was the only reason.
You have the floor, absolutely.
I have a different question. It's fine. You guys, okay. So I'm going to call the question about the textbooks, and I went back to look at my numbers because it was during vacation I did this sort of analysis. So both Reed's and Thornton's increased the math textbooks by $6,000 for the budget, but it was under $2,000 for Master Cola. Now, the, I understand the reason that every school is doing adding money just in case the new curriculum comes in. You've got the money to buy the books. If you don't, you return the taxpayer. It just seemed, I don't think you have one-third the number of students at Master Cola you have at Reed's and Thornton's unless I'm misjudging the population.
So the, the bottom line is, the way that Merrimack budgets for things like this is, instead of it being, let's say, a district line, that we would say the cost is going to be $100,000, and we'll buy the books and we'll parse them out, which is how some places work. We have individual math accounts in each, in each school. So this is our best guess at saying, you know, proportional to the population, this is how we'll account for it under each budget. The fact of the matter is that there might be, when the final selection is made, there might be, we might be over at Reed's Ferry and under at Master Cola, or we might need more funding at Master Cola and a little less than planned at Reed's Ferry. But in the end, those offsets, we do that other times in the budget, but the offsets will equal $100,000. So at the end of the day, this is our best estimate. Now, proportional based on the population of each school, but it may, it may fluctuate somewhat, but...
My overall intent was to make sure that across all the schools individually, that there's enough money to do what you want to do.
There will be.
Because, because we know that, at least I, my personal opinion is, the math curriculum is something that needs to be addressed, it's being addressed. If you guys get it all ticked and tied by the time you go to next year, I want to make sure you got the money to do what you need to do. So when I just saw the fundamental difference between the schools, I just wanted to make sure that Master Cola had enough cash as well as the other schools to do what they needed. That was the only reason.
Appreciate it.
And I just wanted to make, based on what you told us tonight, what I'll call a philosophical moment of clarity, and that is, you know, we did not have a choice this year but to make reductions because of the amount of money the voters gave us in our default budget. So when we consciously kick the can, just know that by just deferring a year because we had no, we had no legal recourse, and we had to cut by a specific amount, that was an area where we could do it and not impact education itself. It's going to cost us to do the same exact thing this year, probably just in two schools, in Master Cola and Reed's, $5,200 more to do the same exact thing because we, because we were put in no position where we couldn't kick the can. So when we make these decisions, if we make these conscious decisions to kick the can, we are essentially going to be asking the taxpayers to buy the same thing for more money. And, and that's something that as a board, I think we need to also make sure that we are willing to hold responsibility for. And it's something that, when I know that we're buying the same exact thing we needed the whole time, but we waited here to do it to feel good about it, how much better do you feel when you pay more for it? And that's just a philosophical disturbance that this budgeting process can get to me every year. But if we're making that conscious decision as a board, we're asking another board to pay more to make us feel better this year. So when we're doing that, I just want to make sure that that's out there in the ether so it's not just eating me alive that we can all think about it. So, but that's, that's kind of my closing comment. You answered my questions to perfection, so I have no follow-up on everything that you presented, so. If no one else has anything else, you are, as I'm saying this year, off the hook.
Thank you very much. We appreciate your time and all the work you do.
I hope you guys feel better. I'm right there with you.
Yeah, thank you.
Nick was lucky enough to be in a meeting with me yesterday where I had it all out, too. So he sat right next to me, he was so happy. So we are on to our next agenda item, which I believe to be Merrimack Middle School, if logic presents itself. So I will invite to the table Principal Adam Carragher and Assistant Principal Shawna Demore. Welcome and Happy New Year.
Thank you very much. So, my name's Adam Carragher, I'm the principal at the middle school. This is Shawna Demore, the Assistant Principal at the middle school. Thank you very much again for having us here this evening. The Merrimack Middle School budget proposal for 2017-18 shows a continued commitment to the district logic model, literacy, numeracy, technology, and school climate and safety. Toward that end, this budget reflects the adoption of a 7th and 8th grade mathematics program. Funds have been requested to create an interscholastic volleyball team at Merrimack Middle School. This increase in athletic transportation, athletic supplies, athletics officials reflect the amount needed in order to be able to support that program. These items were deferred from the 16-17 budget year. Supply counts also are dependent upon per pupil expenditures. I would now like to take a moment to address the different questions that were presented to us from the school board related to the middle school budget. Chairperson Barnes asked about the field trips at Merrimack Middle School, if they were 100% student-funded, and the answer to that question is yes. Our trips are 100% student-funded solely by our student fees for those specific events. Board Member Schneider asked about an increase in the testing and scoring account. The funding in that account supports the STAR 360, which is our universal screening tool. The increase in that account will be to purchase supplies that support other assessments such as the group reading assessment and diagnostic evaluation, we refer to it as the grade, of course, make it a little bit simpler for us, as well as other specific math assessments. This information then allows us to triangulate data and triangulate points of information that give us a more accurate profile of a student in their learning. Board Member Schneider also asked about the math texts and if there was strictly a cost placeholder for the evolving math curriculum or if there were specific details known about the books. And you know the answer. All right, well, we'll just keep rolling along. Board Member Schneider asked if the number of lab stools that are part of the replacement plan could be more gradually purchased, and the reality of that answer is yes, that could be done. In doing so, it would ultimately require extending our plan. Board Member Thompson had inquired if there's a single contract or multiple related to the cleaning of the microscopes, and the middle school microscopes are serviced by the same provider as the high school. So I helped provide a little clarification. At this time, Mrs. Demore and I would like to do our best to answer any questions that you might have.
Are there any follow-up questions from the board? I see Mike, I see Cindy and Andy so far. Well, I'll just start from the end, work my way up. How's that?
Thank you. Thank you for coming. As a middle school parent, I actually wanted to talk about something that's actually not on the budget, but more about your fundraising. And I just wanted to bring light to the no-fundraising fundraising that is done. I personally liked it a lot compared to some of the other ones. I do appreciate that. I was, wasn't sure if you can talk to the impact of, you know, have you seen an increase because you're doing it that way of funds that are available through the fundraising? Just to kind of, I'm not sure if you're ready for that for this and if it's appropriate.
Well, it would, it would probably be something I would have to get back to you about that is actually part of our, our parent-teacher group, which isn't really part of our budget. From, I completely appreciate where you're coming from, from the perspective of a parent who has a student who brings a number of fundraisers home, and I think I can say that we haven't seen a significant decrease in the amount of money that we're actually able to receive through that.
Yeah, it was kind of a last thought, but I know it's not in the budget, but I obviously liked it.
Yep, March has some thoughts, I know.
The only reason I'm going to respond is because the school board rep, Shannon, and I meet with the parent group four times a year, and one of the things we cover is fundraising. And the two teacher reps and really presidents, I believe, co-presidents who have overseen fundraising at the middle school have talked in terms of their appreciation and frustration with the no-fundraiser fundraiser, because they do ask families if they will offer up $10 a year, and in the, in the beginning, there is the initial outlay, and the hope is, because you're only asking one time for that amount of money, that all families would be willing to give it over. But after the initial open house or the back-to-school night or whatever, it falls off, never to come back again. And so when they sit in the company of the elementary chairs who are doing fundraising and they hear what is raised through tons of fundraisers, I mean, with a lot of physicality to them and so on, they just can't understand why wouldn't a family be willing to give over $10 once and call it a day for the whole year? And yet, at the elementary level, they're doing three and four kinds of events. So they've, they've literally laid it on the table to say, we just don't understand it. And then we've talked about, I believe, the fact that, well, this is the third school in line, right? Because there would have been the elementary, the upper elementary, and by the middle, you know, perhaps people are just hoping it'll be taken care of. But they've been very open and frank, and I would welcome Shannon's additional thought, but I hope I represented them correctly.
I would say so, but I love the fundraiser, no-fundraiser fundraiser. I love it, can't say enough. But it definitely is something where, again, when you have them in front of you, I know you've done Mailer's Star Homes as well. I usually do go to back-to-school night and I bring my checkbook and call it a day and usually give more than, just because they didn't ask me for anything else throughout the year, I will give more because I know I'm being kind of left alone, and that's really awesome. It is, it's hush money, exactly. But, you know, with, with that, you're just, you know, I think parents are burnt by the time they get into middle school, and when they get to high school, you know, it's about what their kids are doing, their activities that drive their fundraisers. So the whole, you know, getting the school-wide stuff, I think, you know, and I think in the middle, the elementary schools, there's also the tangibles. You know, you can see the playground equipment that you're not going to see in the middle school. So where that money goes is, is front and center, but, you know, it doesn't, I would say, reduce the value of what the parent groups are doing in the middle school. It's just not something where you're going to see a seesaw or a little playground element that, that will remind you why, why you give. And that, that I think is a challenge that is more difficult for them to overcome. But, no, I think what they do is, you know, keep up the no-fundraiser fundraiser. I know I'm retired from the middle school after this year, but you can say, oh, thank God.
No. I was going to, I was going to address the fact that, yes, it does, there's this lull after the back-to-school night, and so they brainstorm some ideas, and Goodale's Bike Shop donated this amazing bicycle to be raffled off for anybody that donated $10. So that will be happening in April. And then they found the online donation, they set that up as well. So we've gotten a few more trickling in because of that, which has been, which has been nice.
Great.
I appreciate that. I guess, for me, I think it actually saves me money in the long run, so that's why I definitely participate, but I'm kind of interested. Thank you for that additional feedback.
And we'll be sure to pass that feedback on to our parent group as well. Thank you much.
And the 8th graders do have fundraisers, but it's for their, to offset their funds for their DC trip if they want to go. So you might see something from the middle school on that, so.
Thank you for mentioning that, yeah.
No problem at all. So the only thing I would say is, the answer to the question I had was a little bit of a bummer. I know that you guys are good about getting kids out into field trips, but having, you know, no subsidy, I know for, I get concerned about cost prohibition. I know DC is a huge field trip, and that's not one I would say that we would fund an 8th grade to go to, you know, the nation's capital. But, you know, like Camp Sergeant runs about $40 per day twice a year. The Palace Theater event is $20 for, for that event, and it's transportation, obviously, and tickets and that kind of thing, and program costs. But you're the only school in our district that does not put in their budget to offset field trips. So for some students, I'm, I would like to see if we can, maybe in the next year, I would make any changes based on the fact it's something we've been doing, but to maybe say either, if we can find, without being too blatantly identifiable, if it's becoming prohibitive for participation for some students because it is 100% funded by the students to do any of these, these field trip activities. So I would just hate for that to be the fact, so. Just something to think about as we, as we look at our next year, we can gather data with what we know, the way we have it now.
Thank you. We'll definitely take it under advisement. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Oh, Cindy, I skipped over you, I'm so sorry.
Actually, no, I'm glad that you did because I was just, I was following up on your question, which was relating to the field trips. So it's better that you can follow up on it. But I think what I was going to say was along the same vein, and I wasn't really sure why that is, but from a consistency standpoint, you know, from school to school, you know, there is that support of the field trips and whatnot, and so I, and the other clarification was, is the transportation then too, is that, that's also funded, like for the, by the parents, or is the transportation provided? I can't remember. For, for field trips?
For field trips? No, that's funded by the cost per student.
Okay, that's what I, that's what I thought. So, I mean, if anything, I would say from a consistency standpoint, because particularly in the 8th grade, because at least for the non-DC trip, that's kind of a heavy year, I think, for some, for some parents. So I agree with Shannon's comments, and I thought it was a really good question. I don't think, I've realized that through the years, that it wasn't funded consistently.
So I do feel badly I jumped the line, but... So I do feel badly I jumped the line, but Andy, yours?
That's fine. You're sick and we don't want you breathing in this right now. So just a follow-on question about the testing. So you talked about the different areas that you do it. Is the impetus behind these increased tests to better understand skills and placement within the school or as kids prepare to make that great big transition to the high school? Because I know as a parent, there's always a lot of, you know, concern about, are we making the right move when we go from the middle to the high school? So is there justification in both areas for this or what's the reason?
I would say yes. It's information that, that we, we use to help within the middle school. It's information that is, you know, passed on to counterparts at, at the high school and used at their level as well to help provide an accurate picture of where a student is at, at a point in time.
Just to add on to that, teachers are also using that data. They're using it as a progress monitoring tool. They're using it adjusting their instruction based on the data and able to offer interventions, extensions, those types of opportunities for students to find out where they are at different moments in time.
Right. The one thing I wanted to make sure it wasn't, was something related in some standardized testing and things that we have to do for any sort of, you know, any of the other things. But I'm glad it's being used for, within the school to help better understand the kids and where they place themselves.
And one of the tools especially, I mean, their quick turnaround, their really short sessions, and the results are instantaneous. And the teachers are able to have that data in their hands that day.
Okay, good. Thanks.
Any other questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, you're off the hook.
Thank you very much. Have a wonderful evening.
And we are moving on to Merrimack High School. I welcome to the table Principal Ken Johnson, Assistant Principals Peter Bergeron and Rich Zampieri. Welcome.
And I'd like to echo all the nice things that were said this evening. And the high school administration is certainly thankful that you gave us the questions in advance to address. You'll find tonight that when we do address some of the questions, some of the answers are going to be very brief. I think some of the responses are going to be exceptionally detailed. And if you feel you've heard enough as we're giving a response, just please say, okay, I think we get it. That's enough. I'll open with a very brief statement. First, of course, I want to formally introduce two, what I would call senior assistants. I've been very fortunate over the years to have been working for the last 15 with Rich Zampieri and the last 11 with Peter Bergeron. So it's very rare that a principal gets to work with what he would call two senior assistants, and they are just remarkable companions as well. So I'll open it with a brief statement, and I'll just say that many of the line items have been reduced or level funded. However, there are some proposed increases, new techs and additional equipment in several departments, which will add to and enhance our programs. In addition, athletic equipment needed to be replaced is necessary for both practice and competition. And you'll find as you've gone through the booklet, that there is an asterisk at the end of a proposed item, which represents an item cut from the 2016-17 budget that has been reintroduced in the 2017-18 budget. We're going to respond to the questions that you gave us. We're going to divvy up the questions tonight primarily into those areas that we directly supervise. And we'll start with the questions given to us by Chairperson Barnes. The first question that you asked, Shannon, is would you please clarify whether the driver ed program is 100% self-funded through student fees? And the answer is yes, it is. Mr. Zampieri?
Good evening. The first question I have is tech ed at other facilities. Please provide a list of available programs for MHS students at each of these schools and what level of access our students have, the number of student slots per program we can take. We are able to access three other high schools for CTE programs. At Nashua North, our students are able to apply for automotive technology, biotechnology, culinary arts, cosmetology, design and visual communication, and hospitality and hotel management. At Nashua High South, our students are able to apply for advanced precision machine tech, CAD, careers in education, computer networking, construction technology, electrical trades, health sciences, HVAC, engineering pathways, and video production and broadcasting. And the third school is Alveron High School in Hudson. They have three programs available for our students, college accounting, financial services, and marketing. None of these slots, when our students apply, are guaranteed. Our students apply and the CTE schools determine availability based on the number of students they may internally put into the programs. But we've been very fortunate to place at least 43 students currently.
So on that note, are there, you know, I know when you come to us and you talk about scheduling of students and how you have like a 95% scheduling success rate for students' preferences, do you have that kind of data for these technical schools? Like if a student applies for a slot but the slot's not available, do you have a track of, or it doesn't have to, obviously I'm putting you on the spot, so it's not going to be scientific, but do you have an understanding or an idea of how often students seek a placement in those programs and don't receive them?
I do not at this time, but I'd be more than happy to get back to you tomorrow on that figure.
That'd be great.
I believe the next question goes to Mr. Bergeron.
Good evening. This question is from Chairperson Shannon Barnes, and it has to do with co-curricular. With increased funding to co-curriculars, can you update us as to how additional funds are being utilized to fund programs? This goes back to our board discussion when we were looking to make the default budget number, where our student rep suggested that not all co-curricular funds are being spent and we could make the cut from there. Last year, this amount was over expended, and we have always promoted this account to each and every one of our clubs. Once again, not just the teams that compete, such as US First, Science Olympiad, or Quizbowl, but also service clubs, such as National Art Honor Society, Interac, but also other clubs, such as an outdoor club in our theater department.
Nice question. I also have the next question. This is also from Chairperson Shannon Barnes. Please share how your furniture replacement plan is being budgeted in response to managing from a default budget this year. So Mr. Johnson, in his opening budget statement, only read the top part, but as if you, as you went down, talked about how we were ordering for this year, one cafeteria table, 12 student chairs, eight student desks combos, and eight computer tables. These items, we certainly need. Last year, our maintenance department has always worked with us to fix furniture that was broken due to everyday use. We are trying to replace all of our rectangular cafeteria tables with round cafeteria tables, which we find are much more conducive to high school students.
Peter, before you go on with the co-curriculars, I know in 1516, we did over expend by about $9,000. I'll move this up because I don't have a lot of voice. But on 1617, I know we put a jump in that budget. So do you anticipate that we will spend the 74,795 that we have budgeted up to probably close to the penny, if not more?
We do. If you look at, I think there was a question asked about the run rate. I mean, if you calculated that run rate now, we're like $10,000 below. But in late winter, early spring, a lot of our, that's when a lot of our clubs that compete, such as DECA, US First, Life Smarts, teams like that, they will drain a lot of that, those expenditures. In late spring, we have a History Day at Club in Youth and Government, so we would.
Excellent. No, that was, that was a very big, and I wanted to really clarify that and drive it home as we discuss this budget, because that was an area where we spent a lot of time discussing whether that might be a good place to cut. And obviously, we're showing supply and demand is completely there for this, for this area of budgetary support. So, you know, this is definitely as much an education, you know, that we are, we can, we can, we can perform and utilize these funds and make them work for our students. So thank you for the clarification on this.
You're welcome. So the next question Mr. Johnson has.
Thank you, Pete. And Shannon, thank you for your questions. We next go to a series of questions asked by Vice Chair Schneider. First question is about the 504 coordinator at MHS. You state that you know we've discussed this at previous school board meetings. However, can you share details on how this contracted service will be provided? Yes. In this, is this a specific part-time hire for the school district or an outside vendor providing the service? And the answer is, this is not a part-time hire for the school district. It is an outside vendor, and this will remain a contracted service. You also ask, are there background expectations on the person that is brought in, such as knowledge of 504 guidelines? The answer is yes. In fact, she is trained in those 504 policies, procedures, and protocols, and is well-versed in 504 law. You also ask, will this remain in this format for future budget years or become a headcount item, full or part-time? And the answer is, this will remain a contracted service. Thank you for the question. Pete?
So the next question is from Vice Chair Andy Schneider, and it has to do with athletic officials. Can you share the reason why the expended 2015-16 amount was 6,500 less than the budgeted amount? And share whether the run rate for 1617 is aligned with the budgeted amount could influence the budget amount for 1718? The budget requests are done based on what we anticipate for home contests. Oftentimes, when the budget's due, we are unable to know whether we will have certain sports. For example, freshman sports are planned for, but until we get into the season, we cannot know for certain if we will have the numbers to the sport to support the freshman teams. In 2015-16, we budgeted for freshman girls and boys soccer. So 14 total contests at $136 per contest for two officials totals $1,904. It's not $1,904. We did not have enough numbers to support either team. In the 1516 budgeted, we budgeted for freshman girls' basketball, seven contests at $136 per contest for two officials for a total of $952. We did not have enough numbers to support the freshman girls' basketball. We always budget for the possibility of hosting home playoff games, which come at a cost for game officials and two clock operators. We did host a playoff game at the varsity level in girls' basketball. We did not, excuse me, we did not host a playoff game at the varsity level in girls' basketball, baseball, boys' lacrosse, girls' soccer. Total reduction in cost was $880, based on four games that included eight game officials in four clock operators. And I'm not sure if you're wondering, that would cost, an official, one official could be between 60 and about $110 per official. At the time the budget was due, we were not aware of the football schedule. Normally, they come out every two years, but they realign the whole football format. So when the varsity teams played at home, the JV and freshman teams play away. So they change that up every so often against the same school. We had built in the budget to host five home games for each level. The schedule had us playing one less home game for the freshmen and one less for the JV. Total reduction in cost for these two contests for game officials is $440 per game or a total of $880. We played one less JV contest at home in the sports of boys' basketball, girls' basketball, baseball, girls' soccer, and boys' soccer. A total reduction based on five games with two game officials per contest was $650. We did not have enough participation in girls' softball to support JV softball team. The budgeted amount for game officials was based on 10 home contests at $124 per game, totaling $1,240. Total reduction due to fewer contest teams totaled $6,506. And based on the freshman schedules for 1617, we project spending close to the allocated budgeted amount.
As you see from what I said earlier, some of the responses to these questions are going to be exceptionally detailed, but I think you should have that all information upfront. And ultimately, if it's convenient for you, I'll email you any script of responses in case this is too much to absorb.
Right. And this is, it's good because it gives us a little insight as to how you actually do this budgeting. So if it's really low one year, we know the reason why. And if maybe you budget and then maybe it changes and you overspend, we also know the reason why because you don't know some of the schedules. So this is very helpful to understand sort of how you go through the process.
Certainly. I believe I actually have the next question. This also comes from Andy. It says, equipment repair at MHS. Last budget year was the first time we saw this budget item at $12,003 for helmet and shoulder pad repair. The amount is replicated this year. And you ask, is this something that has an endpoint, meaning repairs will be complete? Or is this now an annually occurring charge that we will see moving forward? The reality is, this piece of the budget was parsed out for the first time in 2015-16, just to simplify it and to clarify it for everyone. And this is for the reconditioning of football helmets, shoulder pads, and the repair of football jerseys and pants that may have been torn. And to add to the response, this will be an ongoing cost and should remain constant at least over the next two years. As it happens, I have the next question, and that is regards to MHS transportation to other regional vocational programs. It states, again from Andy, the expended amount in 2015-60 was nearly 20,000 less than budgeted. What is the run rate for the current year compared to the budgeted amount? The answer is that the current run rate is $52,000 out of a budgeted $163,000. And you ask, is there any trending here we can draw on? And I honestly have to say no. While we currently have less students that are going to Alveron, I wouldn't deem it a trend. That number can vary next year. It turns out I also have the next question, and that is referring to the athletic budget transportation to MHS, also from Andy. This may be one of those longer responses. It says, in 2015-16, the expended amount was nearly $8,000 higher than budgeted. What is the run rate for the current budget year and are we budgeting enough in this area? So much as Pete suggested, budgeting for transportation is difficult with regards to athletics because we do not know what our away schedule will look like when preparing the budget. The number of trips per year, at approximately 300 trips, remains similar from year to year. However, the cost per trip could range from $200 to $800 depending upon the destination. Playing a game in Nashua versus playing Keene has a substantial impact on the budget. In the past, we've used a 14-passenger van that we rented for merchants. We use this van for local trips for teams with smaller rosters. The use of this van at the time was highly cost-effective. Unfortunately, the van charges have increased by approximately $325 a month. So we typically use the van for four months out of the year, increasing the cost by $1,300. So we're already looking at alternatives as we move forward. Based on the away schedule for 2016-17, and now increased roster sizes in track and field, which is now requiring two buses instead of one, and having to bus soccer players to the GPS fields in Bedford for home contests, we actually expect to exceed the allotted amount, which was $74,795,000, somewhere between $6,000 and $7,000. Excellent question. The next question goes to Pete.
Yes, and this question is from Vice Chair Schneider, and it's in regards to co-curricular transportation. Do we have a run rate for the current budget year to show whether we're using the budgeted amount for co-curricular? Do we have a run rate for the current budget year to show whether we're using the budgeted amount for co-curricular transportation? Is the 17-18 budgeted amount appropriate, meaning are we utilizing and promoting it sufficiently? So, the answer is, right now, the run rate amount that we have spent for co-curricular transportation is And I think I talked about that earlier, we, through the four quarters. Uh, we have 12 teams that utilize this account for transportation costs, plus 11 other clubs who also may use co-curricular transportation money for trips. For example, the National Honor Society goes to all three elementary schools to read to the students to cross in field games, and they call this Teddy Bear Picnic Day. Uh, last year, they also participated in the Manchester St. Patrick's Day Parade by volunteering to hold all the banners for every organization. And finally, we have 18 other clubs' activities that potentially could draw upon this amount. New Hampshire scholar students each year travel to Fish and Cat Stadium to watch the New Hampshire Fish and Cats play, and they are recognized for their academic achievements. Teams such as US First, Science Olympiad and DECA draw upon this account during the late winter and spring.
I think you have a next question too.
I believe I do. I have the next question. It's from also Vice Chair Schneider. It's in regards to student publications. Uh, the 15-16 amount was under-expended by about 25 percent. Was this a one-time reduction or a trend to more online publication and less need for hard copies? So, we have two publications that the students are involved with and that they're, you know, given out to the student body, faculty and staff, The Hawk and Spilt Inc. Spilt Inc., the school's literally, uh, publication used a different vendor, and thus this decreased the cost. This year, they plan to do two publications as opposed to one. This is Spilt Inc. We are not increasing online publications, publications, but will increase hard copies for the publication of Spilt Inc. And the next question is, Mr. Zampieri will answer.
Sorry. Are the math curriculum changes not impacting textbooks at MHS during the 17-18 budget year as it is in all the other schools? If not, is there a planned ramp for this change? MHS is participating in the district math curriculum evaluation, but will not be requesting text for the 17-18 year budget. Any request in the future will be determined by that evaluation process. I also have the next question, which is, math equipment at MHS? Can you shed light on what each of the graphing calculator packs include? How many calculators per pack and what model and what other items? There are five packs being requested. Three of the packs have 10 calculators each. Those are the most powerful TI, TI Inspire CX calculators, and which makes a complete classroom set. Each pack includes rechargeable batteries, a docking station, unit-to-unit USB cables, unit-to-computer USB cables. And each calculator is made School Bus Yellow with a school property printed on them to make them very obvious in the classroom and about the building. And the other two sets are 30 each of the very popular TI 84 Plus CE graphing calculators. Those packs also include docking stations, rechargeable batteries, USB cables, and are also in School Bus Yellow. You asked, what are the related calculator materials? Uh, the related material is a CBL cradle for the TI Inspires to access real-world data for those classes. And finally, what is the number of small whiteboards being forecasted? There is only one small whiteboard being requested to cover a corkboard in a classroom for one teacher so that she can put the daily assignments on it a little far easier than the corkboard.
So, I have to chime in here when I'm looking at the budgets and I have a wife who is a math department head in another district, and I asked her the question about this. She says, find out if they're the 84 pluses or the Inspires and how many are in it, just so.
Yeah, she was right on top of it.
So, you've clarified it, so thank you.
I believe Mr. Johnson has the next question.
Uh, this question also comes from Andy. It's about athletic equipment at MHS. You're asking about the 40 lacrosse helmets. Are they net new or do they replace existing ones? And can existing ones be repaired similar to helmet shoulder pad repair for a football item? The direct answer is, they are new, but I need to do a little explanation here. Currently, students are responsible to buy and maintain their own lacrosse helmets. Based on best practice guidelines that have been set forth by the National Federation of State High School Associations, known as the MFHS, schools are now encouraged to treat lacrosse helmets the same as football helmets. This includes ensuring each helmet is recognized by the NFHS as a safe helmet, and an outside agency should recondition and certify each helmet as meeting the current safety guidelines. Currently, because kids purchase their own, we have no way of knowing whether the helmet a student wears meets the safety guidelines, fits properly and is certified as structurally sound. With concussion protocols constantly being reviewed, this is an area we need to get out ahead of. Uh, there will be a spike in the budget year one to purchase them, but there will be a small amount needed to replace old helmets and to recondition the new ones we have purchased. So, it is a bit of a leap, you know, again, they were buying their own, but you heard it. We gotta, we gotta think safety first.
That was good background, because there was obviously a change and, and I'm supportive of that change, you know, consistency is great, so.
Thank you. Next, well, you actually have another part to this question.
I think on that same vein, there's more questions.
Sure.
Yeah, I just have a follow-up to that. So, um, with, with that, obviously, there has to be a replacement plan. Do you understand how long these can last, uh, just aside?
But what will happen is, much like football, at the end of each season, we're going to send them out to be certified safe. And then what's going to happen is the very same thing that we discussed a year ago about helmets. Some can be reconditioned, some can be repaired, some are going to have to be replaced and purchased new.
That's, that just, as a side note, like I ski, and I found out that you're supposed to replace your ski helmet for three to five years. And I had mine for 18, so it's kind of, my, no comments on the side. I don't fall, so it doesn't, but with that, obviously, now you have football, you have baseball, you have lacrosse. Is this an incident that's going to happen with hockey too?
I would suggest, if I can, you know, project into the future, I think you're going to see more and more safety innovations. I think it's going to expand to other sports, including soccer. It's already happening, you know, in some collegiate places, all to ensure student safety. So, I would have to say absolutely yes.
I was just kind of looking down the roads, thinking, I'm kind of looking at the line, and obviously with hockey being another sport, so.
If I could, if I could just jump in, I was on the state lacrosse committee for like five years and, and and this is probably going back eight-plus years ago. And even before I was on the committee, they were discussing, should, you know, schools purchase, you know, their own lacrosse helmet? So, it's something that the state, you know, I don't, I don't think it's a quick decision. I think they, they gave it great thought. So, that's a good question, you know, I, you know, hockey could fall into line next, you know, where the school could be possibly responsible for purchasing the helmets.
Andy, I want to note that you did add another question on this. You asked about the ionizers and the filters that we were requesting. And you say, will the ionizers and filters delay the need for the HVAC modifications to the locker room areas that has been discussed in the past? The answer is, it's our hope that the ionizers are actually going to solve the problem. As part of our research, we have consulted with four other schools that have used them, and that has been the case. It's solved the problem. But to be fair, we're not going to know until we hit peak season next fall. So, that's what we say.
But it's your intent to see, based on your research, that it will solve the problem? And you could come back and say, hey, it worked great, or you can come back and say, well, we tried, but it didn't.
Right, right. Thank you again. Z, next question?
Also from Andy. Tech ed equipment replacement at MHS. Are all the items here replacement for current equipment? Or are these net new items for existing programs? Uh, these items are to replace existing equipment. The computers are 10 years old and do not support new software. They will be repurposed, though. Uh, the two camera tasks to be replaced are older, damaged or worn cameras. Uh, should be noted that we have over 180 students that annually use these cameras every period that there is a photography class. Um, and the lathe replaces a unit purchased in 1976. And it's expensive to, well, I was going to go there, but, and it was expensive to repair with hard-to-find parts.
It always happens when you graduate, the new stuff comes in.
I believe I also have the next question, taking Andy off the hook here, to coin a phrase. Uh, science equipment replacement at MHS. Are these replacing existing items or net new for existing programs? Uh, and the answer is, the tubes, the probes, the microscopes are to replace worn, broken or exhausted equipment. I believe I would allow, pass the mic to Mr. Bergeron.
So, the next question is athletic equipment replacement for the high school related to the helmet and shoulder pad repair budget item. Are these typically annual replacements of these items we will see in the future? Or only part of a program to achieve repairable, a repairable batch of items? Trying to reconcile long-term plans for repair, first replacement in this area. Uh, this will be an ongoing cost as certain amount of helmets, shoulder pads fail inspection each year. Uh, we have had fewer failed helmets and pads in the past two years due to the purchasing program put in place. All helmets and shoulder pads, 80 of each, have been replaced as new since 2013. So, the next question is for Mr. Zampieri.
Michael?
I'm sorry.
I just, um, I have a follow-up question, and I'm not sure if you might be able to answer this. But obviously, protocol for, um, for practices and stuff in football have changed dramatically, I think, over the last few years. Have you seen an impact of the equipment actually not being broken down as quickly because of lesser impact practices and stuff like that? Is that a, have you, I'm, I'm, again, I don't know if you'll be able to answer that, but just a.
Well, every, every program is, I, I think I can. Every program's a little different, but you make a good point in that that there's less, you know, full contact where they go full pads. And you had talked about your ski helmet, you know, they have a mandated rule, football helmets have a 10-year shelf life, you know? Even at 10 years, it might not be in the worst shape, but they have, they have to move it along. But, uh, I, I still think you, you get the wear and tear because it's used every day. And, uh, you know, they get a lot, you know, two hours, you know, practice, they're, they're, they're just going 100%. You know, they're going from drill to drill, and you know, our, our football team certainly, uh, you know, this past fall had an outstanding, uh, team. And we hope to continue. Our numbers, our numbers have, you know, have, have increased, and I think they'll continue to increase as well. So, obviously, we're very proud of them.
I'm guilty again. Uh, the next set of questions comes from Mr. Thompson. I see microscope cleaning in multiple schools. Is this a single contract or a multiple? And the answer is, for us, this is a single contract. A staff member has cleaned our microscopes for many years. I also have the next question. How many computers are out of warranty? Are they being fixed or replaced? Um, and this may have been addressed by Nancy Rose on Monday. However, I asked her, and she has informed us that approximately one quarter of all the units in the district are out of warranty, but are kept running by our technicians for as long as possible.
And I have the last question submitted by Mike. You ask, is there any understanding of what athletic boosters provide yearly to offset the cost of the athletic teams? And the answer is, they do not offset the cost of the athletic teams. And I think it's important that you know that some teams do not have boosters. What the boosters provide are enhancements.
Are there any other questions or comments in the board? Andy?
I just want to thank you. I know I backed the dump truck of questions out to you guys, but, um, but I really appreciate it because you, you went into the detail to help us get the background of, you know, the varying amount for transportation and cost and things like that. So, it was very, very helpful, and I want to thank you for all the time you put into that stuff.
Michael, then, Cinda?
Just a follow-up on that last question, because I, I think that sometimes enhancements are actually viewed as offsets to me because there's things that we, the school district does not need to buy. Um, I was, uh, I was surprised to hear when we were actually talking about the athletic field, how much money, I guess, I think it's Sauhegan raises. Um, if I recall correctly, I don't know the exact school district, but, um, well, just in general, they actually have, I believe, a 501(c)(3) that actually raises quite a bit of money to offset quite a few purchases that actually then are not passed on to the taxpayers. And, and that's kind of what I'm trying to get at is to understand, you know, you, you say it's an enhancement, but technically, if it's, if it's a needed asset, then it's, to me, it's an offset to the budget. So, I, I think you might see a continuing theme here that I continue to talk about. What is, what, what's being raised through the community and stuff like that to possibly help to offset purchases that don't need to be done because of that? And I think that, uh, as we continue to talk about a possible turf field, I personally am not going to support 100% funded from the school district. I, I think that funding or raise, uh, funds being raised through the private sector is going to be necessary to do that. So, it's kind of just, I, I want to, I want to help educate others out there that there are things that are happening that aren't just in the budget so that they can actually see the full benefit of the community, so.
Thank you.
Cinda?
Um, yeah, I had a question regarding the world language text and just kind of a, maybe a general, and it's okay if you need to get back to me regarding it. But, um, I know we replay, the line item to replace them. Um, it looks like, like in 2015-16, it's on page 19, if that's helpful. Um, in 2015-16, it was about $6,000. Um, and then it dropped last year to like $2,300. And then, um, the proposed amount for 17-18 is about $7,000. I just wondered if you could give me any context regarding the replacement of those books? You know, what percentage generally do we replace every year? Um, you know, just any kind of context around that line item.
So, you're, you're talking about the, the, for world language text?
Yeah, um, it's the top of page 19.
So, the increase. So, our, so our Latin program, you know, the numbers have certainly increased. Uh, you know, I think, you know, we had, we had an individual in there who, uh, who revived the language, so to speak, and, you know, then we, you know, we had a part-time, and then that person is now full-time, so we, we needed the additional text to support the, the number of students who are in, you know, each, each of those classes.
Got it, and that number is increasing.
They have increased, which is nice, because I, I think if you, not saying, I, I don't, I can't say this for certain, but I think in other schools, you know, Latin is not as popular, but, you know, like I said, when we, the individual, you know, was very dynamic. And, you know, the Latin, you know, kids very much buy into it. And we had the part-time teacher, and now, you know, we have the full-time teacher now.
Okay, so it's really.
That's why, so Mrs. Mezlan, the department head, you know, saw the need to require additional text.
Okay, great. Um, and then the second thing, Marge had asked me to ask as a follow-up from the meeting earlier this week, or one of our recent ones, was on the, um, security cameras that are at the high school. And my question was about, just kind of a, a couple of statements about, you know, how often you use them or need to go to them and, you know, how, how valuable they are to the school. And if you could give me some insights on that, that would be really appreciated.
I'll certainly let, you know, both Mr. Zampieri and Mr. Bergeron speak. But I would say, in all honesty, other than in this past decade hiring some remarkable staff, the single thing that has affected our school in the most positive way has been the addition of those cameras. Uh, in so many respects, we all know that we're on camera, but it allows us to be proactive, it allows us to be reactive, and I would say is the single most significant investment made in the, the past several years.
Well, I would add to that, um, that on the average, I am using the cameras daily. Some days not, other times, three or four times in a day. Um, and, uh, the look on a parent a few years ago, when I was able to find a, a black North Face jacket that was very popular at the time, uh, the student thought it was stolen, when in fact, it was just misplaced. And I was able to find it, return it before. fact, it was just misplaced, and I was able to find it, return it before a long vacation. So it's not just about theft, it is definitely about safety, and it serves, saves us time when we have to interview thirty people to try and get to the bottom of a, a situation, when we could go on the cameras and actually see what actually happened. It saves time for, take kids out of class perhaps, trying to get to the solution right away. So it's a time saver. The truth is very evident in many ways. So it's a very much a positive part of the school culture.
Thank you. I think, I was curious how often you found that you needed to go back to those cameras, so when you're looking at almost a daily basis, that is high usage, in my opinion. And I think I had one statement to make about the budget book in general, and I think this year, this budget book is, what I really like about it is how the increases are explained, how it's been noted that, you know, it was something that was different from last year, and that's really made it helpful for the review process for me.
Michael, you got comments, questions?
Yeah, I had a, a question regards to the athletic splies on page sixteen. Obviously, there's one line item on the, on that page that sticks out, which is ice hockey because there is a fee for ice time. I, I would just like to know, with, with hockey, do they do dry land training prior to season? And I, I think the reason I bring that up is so that people can understand that it's not that they're just jumping on the ice and spending this money, that, I know that there's probably preseason stuff that they're doing not to, to offset some of those hours that are on the ice.
Yeah, that's a good question. They're not on the ice every day. You know, we just had a game yesterday at West Side Arena. Ice time, you're right, is, is expensive. I believe the City of Manchester, they work with us, and Eric Sabian, our athletic director, and it's a very good cost, but you, just today, we did some dry lot, dry land training, so we, we, we do both, and, you know, we, we spend like a, probably an hour, hour and a half tops on ice when we have practice. And as I mentioned earlier, in practice, it's, you know, they're, they're, they're going a hundred, hundred, ten percent, you know, the entire practice, get the most out of that ice time, but we do, we do utilize dry land training.
Thank you for that additional information, appreciate it.
So are there any other questions of the high school? Seeing none, you always get the most questions because you have the most students, the most programs, the most moving parts, and we appreciate you, the granularity that has grown over the years. This is my seventh budget book with, with the board, and definitely with the detail comes, I think, the transparency that we always look to be able to provide. This is on our website. Every school has its own file on our website, so the constituents can see the moving parts and how you have to manage them to get to your numbers. And, you know, when we look at, you know, when a consumer, and, you know, I was doing a very weird places here with default, but as they're making a decision, they have the opportunity to make an informed decision about all that goes into providing the education to our district. And yours, I think, because of its, the nature of it, has the most content. And so we appreciate the additional time we know you have to put in to make that work, and all the information that you gave us tonight, so thank you very much.
And we thank you, because, you know, you've asked for more clarity, and, and we're doing our job. We need to do that, and we thank you for the questions, and very much appreciate you pushing us on those subjects, so thank you.
Thank you, and you are off the hook. Thank you. I like this, it's my thing, like, I'm like, you know, The Apprentice.
Unless they have to come back.
Yes, but not saying, you know, terminated, so. No, it's, this is, just off the hook for, for budgets, which is great. But we are not done yet, there is more, and that is our district budget. And so I'm going to turn it over to Marge, Mark, and I believe Matt is doing some introductions as well.
Yes, Matt is going to begin tonight and, and do an overview of our section, and then we're going to split into thirds to answer the questions you have put forward, so Matt.
Thank you. The district budget as a whole is made up of several basically contractual obligations. I'm going to highlight a few of them for you. It's made up of all professional development for the entire district, support staff, teachers, and administration. When you total that, that together, that's around five hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars. That's been level funded for this year. We have the retirement incentive, as you know, contractually, according to the teacher contracts, we have to provide funding for seven retirements, and that actually is around three hundred and ninety-two thousand, but that actually decreased by one thousand one hundred and eighty-eight dollars. We also have the insurances, like workers' comp and unemployment comp, that came in around two hundred and sixty-four thousand, but that is level funded from, from this year, this current year. We also have dental insurance, long-term disability for professional staff and for teaching staff, and that's seven hundred and seventy-eight thousand, and that's also level funded for this year. We also carry the debt service for the, for the entire district. That's around one point three million dollars, and because of the reduction in the amount of interest we pay every year, the way we've structured our bonds when we first initiated them, there's a reduction there of fifty-one thousand. Now, when you look at some of the other items, and when you go and you look at the budget as a whole, in its entirety, you notice that the budget is up one point nine six percent. It's up one point four million dollars. And the next three categories are kind of illustrative, illustrative of why that is. Transportation, three and a quarter percent increase, that's a seventy thousand dollar increase. The health insurance guaranteed maximum rate increase was nine percent. Because of the change in the demographic, we didn't feel the full weight of that nine percent, so out of an eleven million dollar in appropriation, the increase was a hundred and thirteen thousand. When you look at other contractual obligations like FICA, New Hampshire Retirement for Support Staff and for Classified Staff, that went up significantly, that went up five hundred and eight thousand dollars. So if you take transportation, health insurance, FICA, and New Hampshire Retirement, you're looking at an increase of roughly seven hundred thousand dollars, which is half of the one point four million dollar increase in your operating budget. Where's the rest of it? It's in contractual obligations for salaries that were bargained in the prior years for support staff and for the teacher's contract that passed last year. So basically, what you're, what you're looking at is a level services budget with a one point nine six percent increase based totally on contractual obligations from the past and voting in the past, and what we have to provide by law in the future. So that's my brief overview.
Thank you. So with the overview, we will now go into questions that were raised by board members, and we will begin with Chairman Barnes's questions. I will take the first one, and this is what it says. The current collective bargaining agreement for new plans to be offered allows for new plans to be offered which can save the employee and district money on healthcare costs. When can these plans be introduced and implemented? Keeping in mind, it will not impact the amount we need to budget at this time, but rather achieve savings that we can in turn return to the taxpayer at a later date. The collective bargaining agreement that was referred to only pertains to the Meramec Teachers Association. The Meramec School Board and the Meramec Teachers Association have a sidebar agreement in place that addresses this specific issue. The Meramec School Board may offer this plan entitled Access Blue Site of Service Plan for the year twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen. It will be made known to all of the MTA in the spring of twenty seventeen, and it will be implemented in July of twenty seventeen. Next question for Chairman Barnes is Matt's.
Okay. Please provide information on actual transportation costs to charter schools this year and what options we have if we don't fund this in our budget based on the historical lack of use of these, of this fund. Well, in years past, we had ASCD, the Academy for Science and Design, and their schedule kind of ran parallel to our normal bus schedule, and we could sort of subsume them in our, in our runs to the best of our ability. However, with the new charter school that opened up down by the YMCA, the south end of town, we have had to provide a bus for them. The cost of that is forty-six thousand nine hundred dollars, which without even cracking the spine of the book, I know is around eleven thousand dollars higher than what I have budgeted for this year. That's because we had first figured that perhaps we could get away with offering them a fif, a fifteen-passenger bus, but they have fifteen or more students right now, so we have to provide them with a seventy-seven-passenger bus, thus it costs more. So for this year, we're going to be over budget. For next year, we actually budgeted less than what we're paying this year in hopes that perhaps we can get them into a fifteen-passenger. If not, we'll have to try and find the money someplace else for the extra eleven thousand dollars it's going to cost us for the charter school bus.
Okay. Cinda?
And this was the first year that we've had that for the, for the, it's the Gate City, right?
It's Gate City.
Correct.
For the arts.
Yeah.
Michael?
I think I had a follow-up question for both. One, just for clarification on the healthcare, can, and this goes back to my budget committee days, can you shop to a different healthcare provider at any time as long as it's the same services?
We, we have to do it jointly. We have to notify the Meramec Teachers Association that this is something we want to do, and in Article Leave Agreement, Article thirteen defines exactly how we have to do business. So could we do it? The answer is yes. Would we need to do it in a methodical process? Yes. I would say that the access, to the access blue site of service is the beginning of perhaps offering a multi, a multiplicity of plans, and the best persons to answer this would be Andy, who is at the table, and Matt, who is at the table. But to me, it opens up the door, and we can go further if we do it jointly. Does that answer your question?
It, it does, yeah.
Just a follow-up, actually, follow-up to that, too. And for clarification, no healthcare providers is named in any contract at this point, correct? It's not saying that you have to go to Blue Cross or anything?
Correct.
Right, uh-huh. It's just that the plan that was discussed, this came up in the last negotiations, and we needed to, to have a sidebar because the board really wanted to offer it for this year, sixteen seventeen, and this happened at the end of the bargaining process. And so what we did was, to, to get the contract settled, we said, all right, the board was very good, they said, all right, we won't do it for sixteen seventeen, however, we want a sidebar agreement that will guarantee it for seventeen eighteen and eighteen nineteen, because this is a three-year agreement. So the door opens up this spring. So the first thing we want to do is get this plan out there, which the Meramec Teachers Association understands that we're going to offer, so we, we're going to go through that process. But then, we would be hopeful that it would offer up other plans, because in the sidebar agreement, it says, that's possible if we follow Article thirteen. Andy, would you add to that, or Matt?
I wanted to just pick, but you can go ahead, you're, you're the board, you're the vice chair, Mr. Schneider, go for it.
So you're right that the contract doesn't list a specific vendor, but essentially, the driver for the healthcare cost is listed as, as an HMO. That's, that's listed explicitly as an HMO. We, we work, we, we have three, three tiers, today, three? Right, three, just making sure it's still three, that are done through a particular vendor. In this case, it's Health Trust through New Hampshire with all the different municipalities. We could change it. We could change and have three others through another provider, but we have to go jointly with the MTA, the, the Teachers Association, when we want to propose that to make sure that the coverage is adequate and things. So that's the way that the contract is written. It's not specific, so if we changed it and everybody agreed, shook hands, the contract still wouldn't change, but it's a different location, but, so we go into it jointly based on the way that it's negotiated. The big change for this year that we're going into now is that we can now add an extra one that we've never done before, and that was the negotiation sidebar that we did to allow us to do an additional one to help specifically offer younger teachers or ones that didn't mind a higher deductible, a more cost-effective way to them and the district. So that was, that was the background as to how this happened.
Cinda?
And just to confirm, that sidebar also didn't take away any options that existed for?
And another thing, I, I know, Michael, you, a couple of years ago, you were on the, the Budget Committee, we had conversations about it.
I got some slack for actually voting against it, yes.
Yeah, correct. What we have done in, in negotiations also is change the plan designs, so they've been less costly to the employee and less costly to us. In addition to changing the driver as far as what the contribution was, we've increased the amount of what the teachers pay towards the health insurance based on that driver. So we've done a couple of things, changed the driver, increased the contribution that the employee pays for support staff and teachers and administrators, and we've taken the plans and adjusted them to make them cost lower for both. We used to, for instance, we used to have on the HMO plan, I think it's, I forget what, what they call it now, but let's just call it the HMO. It used to be like a ten, twenty, thirty, ten for prescriptions, ten dollars for generic, twenty for non-genere, and then tw, thirty for per, compounded, specialized, yeah, formulary, thank you, formulary. And now it's twenty, thirty, forty-five. So with prescriptions being a major driver as far as the cost of health insurance, that saves a lot of money. And so we have changed the plan design, even though it's still Anthem, Blue Cross, so change in plan design, change in contributions of the employees. I did a, a little calculation a couple of years ago. If we would have gone back to what we were doing eight, nine years ago, we would have had to increase the cost budgeted for health insurance by well over a million dollars. So these little incremental changes by negotiations over the years have really helped us.
Can I just make a final? I, I appreciate that, and I think that it's good for everybody to continue to hear that that's out in the public. I think that it's come a long way since the day I was on the Budget Committee, and when I was for the teachers, I just wasn't for that healthcare.
Yeah. And it's done in such a way that it's done cooperatively, and it, it doesn't make a splash, it's not one of these things that you'll see on headlines or anything like that, but it has significantly improved our position as far as what we pay for health insurance and what we could have if not for doing this, and the board negotiating these contracts and the teachers accepting them, so.
Just, I think it's just great that there's been that shift, and there's been some adjustments to actually help.
Absolutely.
Toss it on the cost.
Cinda?
I think that the HMO driver has been really valuable to our district. What would be really helpful, I think, once we get through the budget season, is, I don't know if someone, one of us is tasked, or Matt, if you could do some research as to what some surrounding districts have seen as far as percentage increases from this current year to the seventeen eighteen year, and I'd be really curious to see kind of where we fall with what some of our.
We couldn't get that information, but anecdotally, I, anecdotally, I know nine percent is low.
Yeah, yeah, definitely. So it's always good to see.
I can find that out, yeah.
The data. It's always good to see the facts, and I, I completely believe that, and I, that's what I would expect to see, because I agree with you, but at the end of the day, it's like, the, the real numbers are the real numbers, and I think it's just, it's helpful to see that.
Yeah, and on that note, we just had healthcare cost containment, and Health Trust sends membership to those meetings, and, you know, we definitely talked about how, you know, our rate increases compared to some other districts in the area, and it also has to do with, you know, risk pool, so, you know, the claims of the actual users within the district that's getting those rate increases. So you can, you know, it's not just the plans, it's the participants and, and how the, you know, they're needing to use it. Some things are obviously unavoidable, accidents, you know, major illness, but those things all do factor into that risk pool. So, you know, that gets looked at, and healthcare cost containment, that's one of its major functions, and why we as a district keep that, that committee so active and, and relevant. We get me, uh, membership, I think. We get membership, I think, across, a good cross-section of demographic, of location in the district, of role in, in the organizations. You get, you know, par educators, teachers, we have a retiree who is a, who is a member, and then, of course, the two from Health Trust. And I think when you talk about all those things that they can do to reduce usage, reduce cost per use, things like shopping services, that all is something that is advocated throughout the district, throughout the year, facilitated by that committee. And the committee also gets feedback about areas of interest, so that way, if there are programs and services, one they talked about this week, and I felt I could do a subcommittee report, but it talked about a new mom program to help parents, new parents, to save money and, and get care throughout the process and some of the incentives there. And there's, I guess, some people who have children who go to college out of state and how to get the healthcare for those children out of state in the state in which they're going to school, so they get better coverage. And therefore, it's less out of pocket to the employee and to the provider. So I think that's a constant nine-month-a-year conversation. So, you know, and I think it's helping us control costs, you know, as we're applying those plans. But yes, I do think we need to introduce better plans as well.
Marge?
Just going to add that I think the test factor will be how we go about interest, how we go about putting access blue forward this spring, because this is going to be the first time we've introduced really a new health plan together. So I think if we do that, the sidebar agreement also says that in seventeen, eighteen, and eighteen, nineteen, the board may offer other, quote, "new" health plans, subject to the terms of Article thirteen. So I think if we sit down with the Teachers Association, remember, we're off bargaining. That's the beautiful part of this. We're off bargaining in outlying years and look at what other plans are out there. Then I would think that we'll perhaps be able to introduce something without negotiations, just as a follow-up to the sidebar.
I think on this long-term note as well, we have other contracts that'll be coming up. Mesa and our, our leadership advising of our agreements and having those in place and, you know, and measured, we'll be able to maybe make an attractive offer to other groups in the district as well. So I think it's going to give long-term opportunity for us to, to get things moving this year as well. So that's why I was really looking at the timeline to see what the data, the baselines would be for collecting data on introduction, you know, election of coverage, and an actual savings to the district. So I think this is the time, it's timely for us, because we talk about, you know, our healthcare increases and how it's impacting our bottom line. It's budget-related, but, but future budget projected, so it's tethered, but not necessarily to our bottom line this year. So I'm glad we're having the conversation early, and I'm sure we'll be having it often.
The next question is from Vice Chair Schneider, and it relates to the support staff improvement line district-wide. The expanded amount in 2015, sixteen was only about sixty percent of budgeted. Is the run rate for 2016, seventeen improved in this area? With parentheses, I understand this is tied to the Mesa agreement, but good to understand the spend trending. So we are actually on track for similar spending this year as last year, as Vice Chair Schneider points out, about sixty percent of the total amount. That's been a consistent trend over the last number of years now, and this year looks to be trending about the same.
The next question is from Vice Chair Schneider. Transportation district-wide. Has an analysis been done of the existing bus routes and whether we still are using the proper number of buses? Every year when we do the bus routes, the list comes in, we do a rollover of all the kids going from fifth to sixth grade, and sixth grade to seventh grade, et cetera. And then we get with the bus company and we do another look at that and then a sweep if the bus route still makes sense. It's kind of ironic in that a lot of the bus stops where they are, they don't change that much over the years. The only difference you're going to have, if you used to pick up ten kids near the Amherst line, now you're picking up five, but you still have to go that distance. So busing is basically a function of your student population and the size of the town and the distance you have to travel. We do have, and we have had, some parental complaints with the length of the runs right now. But there's nothing really we can do about it because the distance that the buses have to travel, especially when you're talking the upper elementary school, where they have to go all over the town, as opposed to, you know, Reed's and Thornton's, because they're more localized. The, the company, STA, our bus company, has GPSed all our buses, so all our buses have GPSs on them. So they've taken that and they can see that on a computer screen program. And they have purchased a piece of software that they're going to try and use to see if they can optimize these, these bus routes. So that's a study that's going to be ongoing this year to see if the bus routes can be optimized, and perhaps out of that may come a reduction, but that's to be determined right now.
Michael had a question, and then Andy.
So two-part question. One is, is there a maximum time that you have as a, like, child can be on a bus?
It's an hour.
It's an hour. So the next one is, I think that it'd be good to clarify to individuals in the community is that it's, we don't, you don't do bus routes based off of filling the bus to its fullest, it's actually based off of location and routes and stuff like to the schools. So, so yes, into the community, you may see buses that are not one-hundred percent packed to the gills, that, that is because you have timelines and also just locations of children. It just does not align with trying to pack a bus.
And in years before, you know, with the same routes, same stops, you know, you would see that bus a little more full, but because enrollments have declined, you see it a little less full, but it still takes the same amount of time to get to school. And some of the bus routes are inching up to an hour in length right now.
And to that end, didn't STA decide to buy larger buses to be flexible to our needs as they were buying the fleet to take on our account, correct?
Correct. They all bought seventy-seven passenger buses. The standard is like seventy-one or something like that.
So they went a little larger just to be able to be flexible to our demands?
Because there are a couple of routes in the Thornton's Ferry area that are up there in upwards of sixty on a bus. You know, and seventy-seven on a bus, when you have, you know, let's face it, that's the standard, you know? But when you get kids on there with backpacks and instruments and whatever they are, I mean, you're not fitting seventy-seven on the bus. So, you know, it accommodates them. So they did buy larger buses when they got the contract.
Andy, and then Cindy?
So I know in the, I've been around long enough to have been on either the school board or budget committee in terms of contracts with, with transportation companies. When they do the analysis of the routes with the GPS, can they also keep track of the volume of students on a bus to determine whether, in our next negotiation, a variety of bus sizes can be used to potentially save more money? I know we talked about, it may or may not, I mean, you'd like to have all the same buses so you could mix them up and be able to have a bus in multiple places, but I'd like at least to understand what the volume is in the buses, to find out whether there's an opportunity for us to save money in future contracts with different-sized buses that are available to the district to optimize.
Well, as far as different-sized buses, you have the seventy-seven passenger buses, which are pretty much the standard now. And then your next step down is, there's no kind of like mid-sized sedan for this. It's either that or a fifteen-passenger bus.
Actually, I'll disagree with that. I was following some buses around that are about thirty-five students, capacity thirty-five. There actually are mid-sized buses.
Okay, well, I corrected that.
I would, behind the bus, I expected to be really long, and it was like stubby. It wasn't one of the little, like, provider ones that we've got.
Right.
Or the big one, it was somewhere in the middle. So it's just something to log in the back, because if they're going to GPS, the bus routes, keep track of the volume, and, well, they make buses, you don't have to cut them in half. Anyway, I mean, it's just, it's, because you're into the last year of the contract, you're going to have to renegotiate, and they're going to be gathering the data, it would be good to gather as much data as you can to make sure that we're doing the right thing. That's all.
Okay.
Cindy? I know, I'm sorry, the bus is at the seams.
I guess I just had a comment, which was that Merrimack is a pretty expansive town. You know, it's, it's very long from, you know, Nashua to Manchester to, you know, Amherst to Bedford. I mean, it's, there's a lot of area to cover, so even for me to get to most schools from where I live, you know, the shortest possible amount of time is like twenty minutes.
Not to mention the highway right through the middle.
Yeah, the highway and the, you know. And so I think there's a lot of challenges when you deal with the transportation in our town. So, you know, to have the cap and try to keep it as, you know, short as possible, but be responsible about it and continue to look at that, I think is the best, you know, what we need to be doing, and it's what we have been doing from what I understand.
Okay, thank you.
I would have to say the other thing, just to close it, would be that you're, you're putting tools in place to make data-driven decisions. Those are always the best decisions that we're able to make. So we have the GPS, which we didn't have when we started.
Right.
We're going to have a software to analyze the content that the GPS can provide, so the more data we have, the more informed we can be when we go to renegotiate, you know, we can, we can have a win-win agreement. So I think that we're setting ourselves up for long-term success. And definitely, I think that STA has proven itself to be a, what I would call, a strong vendor to get us what we're looking for and trying to maximize those efficiencies. We look forward to seeing what they come up with, with that data as well, so.
Yeah, I will say that STA has been an excellent partner with us. What they have done and how they have connected to the schools, the principals in the elementary schools especially, could talk about that. The way they have come and they've given little seminars on bus safety and how the teachers have gotten to know the bus drivers, and just the relationship between us and the upper management and the local management has been outstanding. And I view them as a good partner going forward and looking at this. And if there's anything to be derived as far as savings after the analysis is done, I'm sure they'll be the first to bring it to the table, because they want to be here for a very long time.
Excellent. Thank you.
The next one? Okay. This is from Board Member Michael Thompson. Total phone cost, I'm wondering if we can get more details on phone expenses district-wide. They seem a bit high. He just wants to understand the costs. Right now, our total phone bill for the entire district is eighty thousand dollars. That includes around forty-five cell phones, too. That's around thirty-five bucks a month, so that's around eighteen thousand for cell phones. So when you take that out, our phone bill for a voice-over IP, which you still pay long distance for, is around sixty-one thousand dollars that we're budgeting for. When you look back over the years, we're paying around twelve thousand dollars less than we paid in two thousand eleven, two thousand twelve. So there has been a savings, and the VoIP has, you know, given our capability and the number of, I don't even know how many phones we have, Nancy would have to say, but it's well over a thousand extensions we have in this, this district. And so the, the voice-over IP has saved us money and has given us added capabilities where we didn't have it before, which has been very important. So I hope that answers, or attempts to answer, your question.
Yeah, thank you for the additional detail. I didn't take into account the cell phones when I was thinking of the phone.
And the reason, reason for that, and let me clarify, every administrator, every assistant, principal, Tom Tousot especially, I need to give Tom like five cell phones all at the same time, because I need them so often. But no, Tom Tousot, our, our maintenance people, our transportation coordinator, our outer district coordinator, our preschool coordinator, people who travel, they all have cell phones. And, you know, for thirty-five dollars a month, I mean, what this does is it gets access to me twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, and it just extends the workday for everybody. So it's a minor cost for the added labor you're getting out of it. I know I'm addicted to this thing, and I look at it like one o'clock in the morning, and I may answer an email from somebody, so.
And you have.
And I have, yes.
Yes, you have.
So do you have any other questions for us? Because that was the last of the ones submitted.
I think you are, you're never off the hook, you're here every meeting, so it's, you don't get the same treatment as the others. But no, there's no other questions from, from a budget perspective at this point. We'll move on to item number five, which is budget discussion. Really, at this point, the first thing is we've had every department come to us now. Is there any department or building where you have additional information needed, where you need them to come back to us at the board's table? Michael?
I have more of a comment, and it's not to actually ask of any of the groups to come back, but I would like a follow-up where maybe we request that maybe some of the boosters, some of the people that are doing fundraising come to the board at some point voluntarily if they want, and just explain what they're doing so that I can understand and also the public can understand what they're doing to benefit the school district beyond what we have here in the budget, so.
Marge?
So I have a quarterly meeting scheduled at the end of January, and my thought was that I would share with them the requests that had been made previously, because I believe you've raised that before. And I'm sure that they would be happy to come, because at the same time, I would hope that the board would be able to compliment them on what they do on an ongoing basis, because they really work very, very hard on behalf of the school system. And then they would be able to tell you what they have purchased over time, which I also think would be interesting, because we sometimes take things for granted, and they would, they would talk to you about those things. And would be able to go in the direction that Michael is raising tonight, which, how hard it is to do fundraising. They will tell you, those that have been aligned, because some of our parents have literally been actively engaged from the time their child came into kindergarten or first grade, and then they just keep doing it all the way up. So they can talk about, over time, what they've seen, and the pattern has changed a bit. And I think it would be great if it came from them rather than us tell you, better that they tell you, you know, firsthand, I think. So my intention would be, they would probably be before you about March, I think, because I want to give them a little time to get prepped.
Just some additional information, I think it would be valuable, is I know that we get the donations on a, on a meeting basis, maybe just a high-level overview of all that as one, one lump sum, I guess, just to kind of show what comes together. Is that possible? Just kind of like what it, high, high level of what it kind of added to the districts. Thanks.
Okay. And then, are there any questions or comments? Oh, I'm sorry. Cindy? Didn't your hand up?
No, it's just been a while, I think, that since we've had that. I know there's been some really exciting things, and I, I think it's, I don't think there's, there hasn't been anyone from those clubs here this year, but, you know, there's, it'd be interesting to hear, too, about some of the events that they've done, like the color run, that was kind of that joint effort that was done down at Thornton's, you know, would be of interest as well, I think, to the community and to this board.
Whoops. And that's the reason I want to give them some prep time, because there'll be some stories to be told. I will tell you, a number of years ago, one of the ways we highlighted the parent groups is the board meetings were held at each one of the buildings. And so prior to the board meeting itself, we would walk to the area of a contribution made, so if they went and did a playground, we'd go out and see the playground or whatever. But now, I think a decision has been made, it's more important for us to go live for our public, and it's very difficult when you move around to try and have the proper recording and so on. So it's like choices made, but I do want you to know, at one point in time, we thought the best thing was seeing is believing, so we actually went to the sites. But I think a good way to start would just be to have them come as a group before you, and then I think you'd hear the stories across the board and realize just how much has been done for this district, which is what you're trying to point out.
And then regarding questions and comments, and I would call these preliminary at this point, is, does anyone have any questions or comments based on the budget as they've been presented so far? Seeing none, because it's all fresh. The thought was, we have another meeting on January tenth, and we will be going over warrant articles as well that night, but where we would really kind of dig down into the budget, if there's anything that we needed to review, revise, talk about, you know, goals that we have maybe for administration, if there's any adjustments that need to be made, or if we feel that it's ready to go for prime time. I think that we're looking at the tenth to work that, and the seventeenth, I think we want to vote. If, if that's a good timeline for you, the goal... The goal for this budget cycle, I think we need to spend more time vetting and letting it breathe, because the one thing, we want to make sure that there's opportunity for constituency to come to us, to ask questions and address any concerns that they have. The more we get to touch it publicly, I think the better off we are to make sure that there's opportunity for feedback. We are in an empty room tonight, we were in an empty room the other night, but as they're watching these from the comfort of their home, give them the opportunity to come to us to ask any questions as well, so feedback is important. Michael?
I'm sorry, did you say the seventeenth?
Seventeenth, yeah, Monday is the sixteenth, it's Martin Luther King Junior Day, so the seventeenth is our next school board meeting, and that's our, it'll be a regular board meeting, and we will have that budget covered at that time. And the meeting on the tenth will be at Town Hall again, I believe.
Will be at Town Hall, and may I just add to your comments?
Sure, please do.
To just say that, so on that night, and what you'll receive in the mail is the fact that we are going to talk about possible warrant articles? In addition to giving us back information to say how you've received the entire budget presented to you, the notion is also having a discussion about possible warrants. So Matt has put together kind of a rendering, if you will, of all the items that would be possible, warrant articles, for you to take a look at. They won't be formulated, that's not what this is about, it's about you looking at what might be possible, or something that we didn't think of, that you want to raise up, then we'll go back to the drawing board and put it together with proper text. So it's just giving us a handle on where you want to go, with the idea that the warrants could be approved at the beginning of February, so you won't have to worry about that. We're just trying to get through the budget, but that's what will be coming in the mail to you.
So the focus is numbers, not, and getting the numbers the way we feel comfortable. So are there any other questions, concerns, or comments on budgets for discussion tonight? Seeing none, I would jump to public comment if we had it. We are alone, so I will close public comment and entertain the motion to adjourn. Made by Mike, seconded by Andy. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Thank you, we are adjourned, and good night.